All right, well, welcome, everyone. What an amazing turnout. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. I hope you have prepared your questions. Don't be afraid to stand up and conversate with the candidates up here. I'm going to hand things over. Oh, sorry. My name is Jordy Bronson. I'm from the Clare's Home District Chamber of Commerce. And this is Amanda from the Clare's Home Local Press. And together, we helped put on this event for everyone tonight. She will go over the rules with everyone and guidelines.
Thanks, Jordy. I thank you guys all for coming out tonight. I thank the candidates for being here as well. Just a couple of housekeeping rules. As I said earlier, there are two question stations on either side of the building that you can provide written questions with. Brandy, who is at the back of the room, will collect the questions and bring them up to be presented to the candidates. We will also have questions at the microphone. If you would like to ask a question, I ask that you line up in the aisle way here, and you'll be using the same microphone as our moderator, Mr. Doug Leeds. And we have a 30-second time limit on your question, so please keep them short and to the point so that we can keep the ball rolling. I would ask that you keep your applause until the very end of the event so that we can get through as many questions from ratepayers as possible. If there's anything that is questionable, Mr. Leeds as moderator has the power to revoke the question or tell the candidates to not answer, and his say is final. I don't know if there's anything else. I think that's about it. Please be respectful of each other and our candidates and our rules. Thank you all.
Thank you, Amanda. One other thing, remind you to do something with your cellphone besides let it ring. A little quick story there. Remember, one time, I went to a funeral, and the minister starts the funeral, and he goes, before he starts, he holds his phone up, he says, "I want to remind you all to turn it off." That's fine, he did. Got halfway through the service, bing, 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 and they were, all of a sudden, he looked, he said, "I turned mine on." Anyhow, so that's, cell phone's off. Remind you, this is not a debate. It's to help you decide which candidate best represents you and give you a chance to ask questions. The opening remarks, the names have been drawn as to who goes first, and we'll be starting off with David Knox. Your opening remarks.
Mayor's first?
Okay, scratch that. Okay, rolling right along. Our new mayor, David. Got it. Oh, right, you're over on this side of the page. Lon Hall is first.
Thanks. Hi, can you guys hear me? Okay, good. Otashua Longdis. So I speak English and Japanese. I've lived in Japan for 23 years. I'm looking to be mayor. I look forward to trying to create business and opportunities between other countries in Clare's Home. There's surrounding community and the agriculture community as well as the town. There's great potential here. Notice that they've taken the marijuana factory and now turned it into a mushroom factory. While I'm willing to talk with them about matsutake and shiitake mushrooms between Canada and Japan, because there's a flight out from Calgary every day to the Norita Airport. I'm a dad. I have four kids and one grandson, and another one on the way. I've been married for almost 30 years. I've lived in Japan, been a little bit, a couple of years in America, and I've traveled to, well, there's about 28 countries on my passport. I can connect the dots to a lot of other places. Recently, in the community, I had a meeting in my garage, well, this was a couple of years ago, to try and bring about 11 businesses out to the solar farm that'll be going out of town here to the east. And I look forward to talking to the businesses again. It looks like this will go forward soon so that I can create business and commerce that can come to town here. There's about a $750 million solar farm, and I'd like to see $7 or $8 million come back into this town to help out. I've shaken hands and opened doors in many countries. I've shaken many hands and talked to many people here. I realize that revitalizing our industrial park and bringing real jobs back to Clare's Home is an important fix. I've talked with people with great wisdom and knowledge in our community, and I acknowledge that they have made many mistakes in the past, and they share that knowledge with me. And as mayor, I'm perfectly willing to open my mind, open my heart, and talk to these people and reach forward to them. There's many things I'd like to add and say, but if you could, I'll do it at the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Rolling right down the list, we've got Brad Slaschberger next.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for all coming. Wonderful. I'm Brad Slaschberger. I'm running for mayor. I've been mayor for two years. I've lived in Clare's Home for close to 50 years. I always tell Rob 45, so I'm not making myself that old. I have been married to my wife Cindy for 44 years. We have three wonderful sons who live in Lethbridge. I wanted to start off with some achievements that this council has and administration have achieved this past term, starting with the purchase of a new fire truck, a new garbage truck. As well, we completed several projects like Amundsen Park renovation, community hall renovations, and completed the skate park. We've created tax incentives for commercial and residential growth. We built and sold eight residential lots at Pine Place. We started Coffee with Council, which has been very popular. If you have any ideas, questions, or concerns, please plan on attending. We helped with getting the soup bowl started. Look how that's turned out. We also have two major infrastructure projects underway this year. With the help of the service clubs, we're starting renovations on the Moffett Ballpark. We have BRC Aircraft up and running. Big plans for expansion at Western Fine Meats. Custom Cannabis has been sold. These three businesses are going to bring a lot of jobs to Clare's Home. I'll finish it at the end.
Good man. Okay, before we jump to their closing, which we'll let the others do the openings now, and we'll start with David Knox.
Hello, how is everybody? My name is David Knox. I'm running for town council. About four years ago, my wife and kids and I decided to move to southern Alberta, and we thought it was a great idea, and we looked all over. We looked at houses in Staveley, and we were buying the house online, so, you know, it was a bit difficult, but we looked at houses at Staveley and Granum and Fort MacLeod, all the way up to Okeittowkes, to the Pass, Barron's, we almost bought a house in Barron's. And then my wife found a house in Clare's Home that fit the bill. It checked all the boxes. There was enough houses, enough rooms for all of us, and it just looked great. And the next question was, well, what's Clare's Home? You know, where are we moving to? So before we put a bid down, I started Googling Clare's Home, and I saw they, okay, they had a grocery store, that's great. They had hardware store, okay, oh, gym, oh, I like that. Five liquor stores? That was a bit much, but, so then I called my cousin who lives in Nantucket, and I said, Kelly, what's Clare's Home all about? And she said, "It's amazing. It's amazing. You'll love it. It's perfect for you guys." So she wasn't wrong. We moved here, sight unseen, bought the house, and we've loved it ever since. We fell in love with the town and the people, the events, the civic pride. We felt at home here right away. We felt a sense of community that we never had where we used to live, and that sense of community continues to this day. I want to see that community spirit continue and grow. I want to get more people involved and volunteering. I want to help make Clare's Home a place where people want to come and live and visit. I want to make Clare's Home a place where people want to bring their businesses. I want to make it a place where young people want to stay and not go to Lethbridge or Calgary or anywhere else. And I want them to participate in community life as well. I want to be part of the town's future. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, David. Next is Riley Joden, and I got told to keep your mouth closer to the mic. We did hear you, David. You're okay.
Do it again, if you want, I could just...
Yeah. Go.
Well, I'll start by saying I am horrible at this, so I've prepared a speech. I'd like to start with saying, good evening, everyone. I want to start by welcoming all the residents and business owners here tonight, also my fellow candidates. It's great to see so many people who care about the future of our community. My name is Riley Joden, and I am running for town council because I believe in the strength of our town and the potential we have when we work together. My approach is built on four main values: accountability, growth, listening, and financial responsibility. Accountability means being open, honest, and answerable to the people who elect me. You deserve to know how decisions are made and why, and I promise to always be transparent and ready to listen. Growth is about creating new opportunities while protecting what makes our town special. It means supporting local businesses, welcoming new families, and building a community that continues to thrive. Listening is at the heart of good leadership. I believe the best decisions start by hearing your ideas, your concerns, and your vision for our town. Your voice should always guide the choices made by council. And finally, financial responsibility. It's about making smart, thoughtful decisions with taxpayer dollars. Need to invest in what matters most and keep spending under control and ensuring value for every dollar spent. I'm committed to building a future we can all be proud of, one based on trust, opportunity, collaboration. Together, we can make sure our town continues to grow in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Riley. Next is Diana Ross.
Good evening, and thank you all for coming out tonight. My name is Diana Ross, and I'm proud to be running for Clare's Home Town Council. For the past 18 years, Clare's Home has been my home, a place where I've raised my family, built connections, and seen firsthand the strength of the community. I was honored to serve for two years on town council after by-election, where I worked hard to represent our residents and gain valuable experience in how municipal government operates. I believe Clare's Home's future depends on responsible leadership and a clear vision. My vision is a town where our business community thrives, our infrastructure keeps pace with growth and family, and seniors alike feel supported and included. My values are simple but strong. Accountability, making sure council decisions are transparent and responsible with taxpayers' dollars. Collaboration, working alongside residents, businesses, and community groups to build solutions together. Sustainability, planning for a long-term growth that balance physically responsibility with improving quality of life. I believe Clare's Home has the potential to be not just a great town to live in, but a place where future generations will want to stay and build their lives. That's the vision I bring forward to share, more about my ideals and hearing from yours.
Thank you, Diana. Next is Sherwood Layton.
Thank you. How many of us have noticed sharp increases in our home values and property tax assessment? Oh, okay, thank you. How many of us have noticed sharp increases in our home values and property assessments over the past four years? Sooner or later, governments will run out of other people's money. Every taxpayer is assessed and billed by four separate organizations, namely the federal, provincial, and municipal governments as well as businesses. We are compelled to pay taxes on our incomes, property values, licenses, permits, fees, and any goods or services we use. Prudent, reasonable, and balanced budgets create stable economies that benefit and protect society. However, the opposite is true when operating costs and expenditures exceed revenues and force deficit spending. Borrowed monies must be repaid with interest. To make up the losses, governments and businesses traditionally do one of two things: either raise taxes and costs to users, or, less often, tighten their belts with spending freezes and astir budgets to stabilize the economy and check inflation. I make one promise: to always remind council that we are overtaxed and need to exercise restraint and prudence in our budgets and expenditures. Council members are representatives of the public, not our rulers. Let them be held accountable when spending other people's money, when spending our money. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherwood. Next is Candace Meister.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming tonight. My name is Candace Meister. I'm a wife, mother, and grandmother, amongst many other titles. I'm running for reelection for you and for me. I understand many of the issues facing our constituents and our municipality. I wish to continue voicing my perspective at the council table. Being part of the conversation ensures that I know that the best possible decisions are made for the residents of Clare's Home. I would like to say that we could lower your taxes, but without cutting your services and ignoring our growing infrastructure needs, that's nearly impossible. I believe that the current council has made significant effort in creating a positive environment for growth. Clare's Home is changing. Now, more than ever, we need passionate, open-minded people to foster the conversation and approach solutions pragmatically. If reelected, I will continue to be the devoted public servant that I have been. I've performed my duties diligently. I've contributed my voice and hundreds of hours of my time, helping ensure my committees are successful. It brings me a great sense of joy investing myself into this community. Clare's Home is worth it. Not all of the decisions made are easy. There are no quick fixes, and progress takes time. Our small-town council is made up of our friends, family, and neighbors. The team you elect will determine the next steps on our path forward, and I hope to be part of it.
Thank you, Candace. Next is Arnie Turmoros. And if I massacred that...
It's okay.
Let me know.
You do it. My name is Arnie Turmoros. I'm not a politician. I'm your neighbor. I believe Clare's Home needs fresh voices, steady leadership, and a common-sense approach to the future. I was a police officer for 12 years in Victoria, British Columbia. I pastored churches for 24 years, and I was a volunteer firefighter for four years in Callwood, BC. My wife and I have retired here. We love the town, and yeah, to me, service means stepping up when it matters most. I've been married for 50, almost 52 years. I have four children, 11 grandchildren, and four great-grandchildren. My priorities are proactive housing solutions, supporting jobs and families, and the reason we need the housing is because we need people, and the people will start businesses and stuff like that. We need stuff to go on in this town so that our young people don't leave. We need to give them a reason to stay here and for us to grow and be healthy. And we need to plan for the future, and we need to do that now, build with smart, long-term goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me see, oh, Seth Wagner.
Good evening. My name is Seth Wagner. I'm a husband, volunteer firefighter, and longtime Clare's Home resident who believes in one simple idea: strength and community. I'm running for council because I want our town to be a place where families feel secure, businesses can grow, and people are proud to put down roots. I'm not bringing a big political plan, just a steady way of getting things done. I start by listening, I decide with facts, and I own the outcome. That's how I work on the fire line, that's how I work in the gym, and that's how I'll serve you at the council table. My priorities are straightforward. One, reliable core services and infrastructure: roads, water, waste, recreational facilities all need consistent, transparent planning, so you know what's getting done, why, and when. Two, a practical path for growth: support small businesses, smooth out the permitting process, and align incentives so new ideas don't stall. Growth should pay its share and protect what makes Clare's Home feel like home. Three, public safety and resilience: from emergency readiness to crosswalks near schools, we can make common-sense improvements that protect our people without wasting tax dollars. And four, open books, open doors. Budgets should be easy to understand and open for discussion: clear updates, plain language, and real transparency, so every resident can see where their tax dollars are going and why their decisions are, why these decisions are being made. If you elect me, you'll get a counselor who shows up prepared, asks direct questions, and works well with others even when we disagree. I don't promise everything. I promise work you can see and decisions you can understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Next, we have Keith Carlson.
Well, that's a little bit closer, okay. As much as I love public speaking and all of these wonderful faces I see, my name's Keith Carlson. Long-term resident, just like everybody else. We have been in town for the last 25 years. I was actually born in the lovely General Hospital back when we actually had that ability. But in all that time, I've seen a lot of extra challenges that we face as our funds slowly deplete. Our dollars don't go as far as they used to. When I came on to council eight years ago, I thought to myself, man, oh, man, I'm going to do everything I can to make a dollar stretch, and then I realized exactly what I didn't know. So the last eight years has been a great learning experience for me. We are in a position now where we see potential for a number of jobs. We're talking to the tune of about 200 jobs coming to town between the plane manufacturing and the meat processing plants. With that comes houses, with that comes the expansion of the area structure plans and potential dollars within our community. It's taken a long time to get here. I made a commitment to myself that I would see a couple of streets filled with houses that are actually being built and trades back into our community, so we had consistent ability to build the town on an ongoing basis. To this day, we are in that position where we're this close. I had never planned to run past eight years, but because we are this close and it takes that much time and effort, I've stepped up again. I will continue to make sure that we bring things through the fruition and keep Clare's Home the amazing town that it is with an extended tax base. And there's a great big sign in front of me that says, "Stop," so I'm going to waste another three seconds just to say thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Next is Rod Kettles.
I gotta do this like David. Makes sense. My name is Rod Kettles. I'm running for council for the second time. Always thought you should do it twice. We moved here, Elaine and I moved here 30 years ago. This community helped us raise a couple of big boys, and I've always wanted to be in a position to serve and give back a little bit, and that's what I've tried for the last four years. I think others have mentioned a lot of the accomplishments we made. I remember I went on to council thinking I'd be pretty much a fiscal hawk, and then the fire chief comes to you and say, "Our fire truck is end of life." And then the next year, they come to you and say, "Well, the garbage truck is end of life, and it's not going to make another whole year, plus, we have to change how we do it all." And then, you know, this year, we are doing five-year debates about what we, what some projects are, and head of operations comes, "Well, you can debate a lot of things, but you red-circled this one section of street saying, 'This must be done.'" And all that comes with $900,000, $700,000. It's hard. It's hard. But we always have to remember, we're trying to defend and protect, we're spending other people's money. As much as the accomplishments, I think it's important that the committee work that we do, because the reality is, it's the committees and the nonprofits that do a lot of the heavy lifting in this community. The service groups, they do so much, and we have to support them in every way we can, and I think a larger council role is to smooth the waters, so to speak, and let good people, good motivated people, do the jobs that they want to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rod. Next, we have Charlie Malazo.
And I do.
Malazo.
Him.
Thank you, Doug, and thank the audience for coming and showing their interest tonight. For you that have not come to lunch on a Tuesday with me, I'll give you a little bit of my background, who I am, and why I'm in this chair to run for council. I was born in Winnipeg, don't hold it against me. I moved to Calgary in the late 80s. I moved to Vancouver in the mid-90s. In 2000, I moved to, 2009, West Kelowna. In 2021, at my daughter's request, we followed her here to Clare's Home, my daughter and my granddaughter. I spent 40 years in the sale of electronic components to companies that manufacture products that we use. I have a long history in serving on societies. In Winnipeg, I was a member of the JC's, the Junjun Chamber of Commerce, and was a vice president of that organization. In Langley, BC, I was president for two years of the Langley Crime Prevention Society, working with the RCMP. Being part of that, I became an amateur radio operator and spent many years as many parts of the executive of the Langley Amateur Radio Association, which today I'm still an honorary In West Kelowna, I was vice president of our homeowners association. The community we lived in had 492 doors, about 1,000 people. It was like running a small town, so I'm kind of used to that. On arrival in Clare's Home in 2021, I joined the Kinsmen to meet people and do things for the community, and I've been told to stop. I've got a lot more. Ask me, and I can tell you.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie. Okay, we have one more, and this is Craig Zimmer. He's unable to be here tonight. He's an existing council member now, so I'll ramble here. Good evening, everyone. My name is Craig Zimmer. I am seeking reelection to be your voice in town council. I would like to, first of all, apologize for not being able to make it tonight, and would like to thank me for being my voice. I believe you should vote for me because I've enjoyed being your voice during my two terms on council. I've enjoyed working with council, administration, and the committees. I sit on to make Clare's Home a great place to call home. I am also proud of the accomplishments we have achieved during this term. I know it may not seem like a lot has happened, but that is far from true. We have done many underground infrastructure repairs, upgrades, and... and new installations that are required to ensure we have a thriving community going forward. The Pine Place subdivision was a big step into bringing some needed housing opportunities to Clare's Home. I am also excited to be part of the decisions with council administration and the two developers in construction of two different subdivisions in town to bring even more housing to our community. I know these are in the early stages, but the ball is moving forward and I am hoping to have increased residential lots for sale. It will attract new business to town so we can be more than just a bedroom community. We can be a community where our families can both live and work. I would like to thank, or I'd like to talk more on the accomplishments, but Mr. Leeds only has three minutes to read. Rolling right along. Why should you vote for Craig Zimmer? I understand how hard people work to have worked for their money and I want to be part... Really? Okay, here's page two. Thank you. Oh, right, that's me anyhow. Carry on, give me the rest of that page. Okay, so we'll now ask for questions from the floor. Um, you can come up or you can present Brandy with questions, and she'll come and pick them up. And she already has a few, and so do I. Start here. Okay, hit me, you can. Is there someone wanna come up and?
Might as well start with something controversial. Um, I did a quick Google search on the way here, and when you look at Clare's Home, there is a list of a dozen churches or houses of faith in our town. When you think about the population, and if we averaged 50 to 100 adherents to each house of faith, are you kidding me? Um, you'd have a quarter of the population. Uh, there's a lot of talk about business and entertainment and infrastructure, all very, very important things, but for a quarter of the population, um, honesty, integrity, and, um, a basis of righteousness is really important for the people we vote for. Um, would you be comfortable indicating how you stand?
Thank you. Okay, there we go, Keith.
One of my favorite topics, um, because I do not attend any building, uh, to indicate my faith. However, uh, I believe that you can be righteous, you can be kind, you can have faith, and you can have morals, uh, without attending a certain church of any, any, any form. So, I think it comes down to people with integrity that help serve more than it does the ability to say they come from a certain faith. Just being a good person, uh, you can, you can do that sitting on a rock in the middle of the hills and, and still be an awesome person.
Thank you.
My family was a member of the United Church for, I forget how long. We, I sat on the board of directors for the Clare's Home United Church. All three of my sons were baptized in the Clare's Home United Church. Religion is very important. I have members, I have friends that are members of every church in Clare's Home. So, I believe in it.
Thank you. Lon?
Can I Doug?
Yep.
In our church, we have a creed that says, "We claim the privilege of worshiping Almighty God according to the dictates of our own conscience and allow all men the same privilege that they worship how, where, or what they may." I believe strongly in the Ten Commandments, and I've seen how that applied even in a country like Japan, who, there's no Christians there, but with the application of that, they rose from the ashes to the second largest economy in the world. That's how good these principles work. Sometimes you can preach it, but preach the gospel at all times and when necessary, use words.
Thank you. Charlie?
Faith is a very much a personal choice. Uh, I was brought up in a Catholic home. Uh, I was married in an Anglican church. Uh, presently, I do not go to a building to support religion and faith, but the rules and the beliefs of, uh, integrity, honesty, uh, are part of my culture and part of me.
You. Deanna?
I'm very involved in Parallel Church I attend. Uh, I'm also very involved in Not For Sale, which is very helpful to others in society. It helps extend the hand to somebody in need. So in those different areas and programs, I'm very much involved.
Ernie?
I'm also very much involved in Parallel Church. Uh, faith, family, and community are at the heart of everything I do.
Jesus was asked, "What was the greatest commandment?" And he said, "To love the Lord thy God with all thy heart, might, mind, and strength; and the second is like unto it: Thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself." If we follow those two principles, we will be a righteous people regardless of which building you attend.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Whoa, where'd my lineup go? Here we go.
Don't be scared. First of all, I don't care which church you go to or don't go to. I personally don't think that that is relevant to a municipal election. Um, second of all, thank you to all of you for putting it out there and stepping up. There's quite a few faces, I don't recognize some new people to town. I would like the new people to town, I would say within the last five to 10 years, what you think you know about this community and what this community needs.
Charlie?
Uh, I'm a, I'm new to the community, moved here four years ago. I've become very involved in the community, um, with the kinsmen, uh, the soup bowl, and the social center. Uh, I see a lot of things and drive around the communities, and one of the things I see is maybe not enough growth in the community. Uh, the community needs to grow to keep its, to increase its taxation base. Uh, without increasing the taxation base, uh, all the costs that, that come to the town come to the current rate payers. Uh, so I see one of the things is growth. Growth in our taxation base is one of the things that, uh, the community needs.
What I've noticed in Clare's Home is there is a hidden treasure, and that treasure is the people here. It's the community spirit. What I would like to see is I would like to see the older folks especially being utilized for their knowledge, their wisdom, and their understanding. For those of you with children, adopt a grandparent. Thank you.
Seth?
Um, yeah, so kind of to reiterate, um, what I talked about first. Um, I believe we need reliable core services and infrastructure. That's a highly important thing that every town is gonna need. A practical path for growth, so we need to figure out ways that are going to allow us to, uh, grow and to sustain that growth. We need public safety and resilience, we need people to feel safe in their homes, we need people to see, feel safe on the streets, and being open and transparent with our population. Um, also communication through different forms of government is also a huge benefit.
Thank you. Okay. We'll start getting, working on this pile before I can't carry it. Um, for the current councillors, it's important for councillors to be actively involved in our community. Can you share one accomplishment from your last term that you are proud of? Were you hands-on, directly involved, not something that, that was just a notion? Candace?
I'm sure you all know where this is going already, but my proudest accomplishments this year have been with the museum. Uh, we've done, we've created a whole bunch of new events that are fun and family-friendly. We've got approval for our new building that we've been fundraising for, uh, which is a huge accomplishment, it's been on the books since 2013. So, I, just, just being involved with the museum is one of my greatest joys of serving this last term on council. It's amazing and I love them all.
Thank you.
Um, I've been involved in chambers of commerce and just seeing the brainstorming that we've done together and, uh, to accomplish like July, the Fair East Canada Day, having a gathering at, uh, St. General Park, and then putting up and seeing the teamwork coming together and sharing together great ideas on what, how we can, uh, have more activities in our community to bring about laughter, to bring about people together and having fun. And so that's been, uh, tremendous.
Thank you.
It's a good day for it because, uh, we went from sod turning to sod laying today. So the sod went down at, uh, uh, the Porcupine Hills expansion. Uh, so we've got 16 more seniors, uh, houses going, going in and being ready to, to occupy within the next, I believe we're down to four weeks. Uh, and that has been an incredible challenge from the point of dealing with EMD for the land purchase, uh, to accomplishing another $1.5 million in funding for Phase 2 that we, uh, secured here a couple of weeks ago.
You.
I'm probably most, uh, most proud of our work with our committees. I've been involved with the play school, the, uh, daycare committee, the golf course. Um, we do, those committees do a lot of, lot of work fundraising, you know, playground equipment, whatever, all the standard stuff. And, and as a group, previous group basically said, uh, I am the least important person on those committees. Um, the folks do a lot of the heavy lifting and, uh, uh, folks from the town are there to, uh, help facilitate and make sure that, uh, things stay, uh, as problem-free as possible. So pragmatic, I guess.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Um, what are your plans to acknowledge unpaid volunteers in Clare's Home? As an example, the dog park. What are your plans to acknowledge unpaid volunteers in Clare's Home?
Um, we have a, FCSS puts on a volunteer supper every year where we acknowledge all our volunteers and show appreciation. Uh, I am always there to make sure, as mayor, I express our gratitude.
Thank you. David?
I, I think, you know, that most people that volunteer in town don't necessarily want to be acknowledged, uh, you know, that's not why they're doing it. That's not why I do it, um, as well as, uh, as Candace said, I'm on the museum board as well, and, and it's been an amazing year that I've been helping out there. And I don't care if I get acknowledged, I didn't even go to the dinner because it's, that's not what's important. And I think one of the things about, about the town would be to get more people to volunteer and to, again, that community, that sense of community pride that people have. And, and if it's a town that people wanna live in and they love it here, they're, they're not gonna worry about being acknowledged, you know.
Thank you. Seth?
So, being a volunteer firefighter, I, I think if your want for acknowledgement is that much, then we need to look at, why are you doing it? I think it's really important that your head's in the right space to be doing it. Um, and it is good to have, you know, people come up to you and tell you, "Thank you and good job." I think that's wonderful, but I think at the end of the day, if you're doing it for money or for, uh, status, that's, then your head isn't in the right place to be in those.
Thank you. Ernie?
Specifically, one of the ways that you could help the people who volunteer at the dog park is to pick up your dog poop when you go there.
You got a question, sir?
Um, to all the new council members that are running, Clare's Home's currently enrolled in a immigration program. What are your opinions on the program?
Yeah, David?
Um, I think it's great. Um, when we moved here, I didn't know that there was such a, a huge population of, of, you know, different cultures here. Um, and, uh, we've become friends with so many of them, um, that I am, that's one of the boards that, that when I looked at the list of boards, if I became a councillor, that was one of the ones that I wanted to be on. Um, I've seen just amazing work ethic and great people that has, to be quite honest, has sort of changed my opinion from coming from back east. It's just, uh, it was so fresh and nice to see, um, people that were living here that wanted to be part of the community, wanted to work hard, and were true Canadians, and I loved it. And so, yeah, I love that, that whole, uh, that whole, you know, uh, board, and I would like to be on that if I became councillor.
Thank you. Sherwood?
At one time or another, all of us stem from people that were immigrants in this country. If they are here to build a new life, to build our country with us, then they are more than welcome. This is where they belong.
You. Seth?
Um, so yeah, I, I agree with them, uh, that have spoken so far. Um, I think the big stipulation on that is if we are gonna continue these policies, then we need to make sure that we have, uh, places for them to work and places for them to live. Um, we're running out of room in this town, so we need to figure out something that is going to be available for them to take root in Clare's Home.
Thank you. Charlie?
Immigrations and immigrants, uh, increase our culture in our, in our community. Uh, we're fortunate that we have a number at the soup bowl. Our head cook is a refugee from Algeria. Without her, we'd be lost. So I'm very much in favor of the program and enjoy the people that I do get to meet.
You. Ernie?
Well, I come from an immigrant family. My parents immigrated to Canada with 10 children, and, uh, we helped populate this country.
I think we have a question from the floor.
Thank you, uh, Brad Toon trustee on the school board. Really appreciate all the support council gives to our schools and our community to our schools. One of the things that we continue to hear about retraction and retention of staff is affordable housing in our community. It was mentioned by, uh, Seth there in, uh, you know, talk about immigration. Wondering what you feel council's role is in, uh, creating affordable housing spaces in our community?
Thank you.
The chicken and the egg. Uh, and when we originally had, uh, come on to, to council, um, the thought pattern was, how do you bring people to town? This immigration program came through and we went, great, there's a little bit of labor. If we've got the ability to have the labor, do we have the jobs? Now we're getting... Now, we're getting the jobs. Because we're getting the jobs, we have people looking at area structure plans and actually want to move earth next year to put in residential streets. So, when we talk about affordable housing, we talk about capacity and need for it. We've reached that critical mass where private investment wants to invest in Clarestom, and that is, part of it is seeing that affordable housing come along with the jobs. Without the jobs, you don't have the need. So, big chicken and the egg always creates a degree of challenge when, when you are in that position, because you have to create pain before you actually create growth. And I think we're officially ready to be that lobster that sheds its shell and grows a little bit.
You. Anyone else? Rod?
I threw a question at Brad, so I better get on this one. It's important that council build relationships. We've done a good job with EMD. We've had some very early steps in building relationships with the school division and have had some meetings. When they came to us, they, they, they mentioned the retention problem in Clarestom. Clarestom's curse and its blessing is we're halfway to everywhere. And so, so we get people move to town for a while, and then they, they move away to build their families or for other opportunities or whatever. I think it's critical that we provide, besides the obvious, housing and a job and all the things, we provide a community recreational capabilities, places where they want to raise their family. It was what kept me in Clarestom. I, I think it's important that we carry that on to another generation.
Okay. Got sense there was a question.
Thank you. I, I'd just like to say to all of you, thanks for running. I think it takes a lot of guts to get up there and open yourself to questions from the floor. This question is about environmental sustainability. Alberta's becoming particularly southern Alberta, hotter and drier, and this is, we were lucky this year, this is the first year that we didn't have to, oh, I'm getting the sign. Okay, so where would you go with our water solutions, either locally or regionally, to ensure that we have a good supply of water?
Anyone? Arnie?
Well, I lived in Calgary for eighteen years before we retired here, and eighteen years ago in Calgary, they talked about the fact they only had enough water for seven hundred thousand people. But today, they have almost two million in the greater Calgary area, and they still have water. We just have to take care of what we have and not fear or be paranoid about what's going to happen in the future. It'll happen, it'll get taken care of.
Okay, I'm gonna throw this question in here, so you know it's right on top of all this. To all the councillors, who owns the water? Sherwood?
Water is common property, it's owned by everyone. It's a gift to us from God. Now, we might charge people for delivery of it, but the water itself belongs to us all.
I can add a little thing in there, the queen owns the water, oh, king now, but queen owns the water, the town owns the infrastructure, and that's basically what, how it all works. Excuse me? Go ahead.
So thought King John in thirteen fifteen. He signed the Magna Carta because he was forced to, because he changed his mind, he ended up being deposed. Thirteen twenty-five, his son reaffirmed the Magna Carta, which gave us our rights. The queen, or the king, or anybody does not own something that is common property, it belongs to us all.
Anyone else? Brad?
Sherwood's correct. The water is water, it belongs to everyone. But as council, it's our responsibility to use the water correctly. We need, we need to be aware of it, we need to be, conserve water wherever possible.
Okay.
Evening. My name is Tom. I'm not warm, fuzzy, or religious, so I'm gonna make this quick. I spent fifty years as a tradesman and a tradesman educator in the college level, and I would just like to make sure that if you're bringing all this, or trying to bring this business in, or businesses into town, that there is some kind of way of letting people or this younger generation know and for their education about what opportunities are here, because very typically, what happens is the new businesses bring in the people they need, not local people. And so, you've got to be a little bit cognizant of that, so, for whatever it's worth.
Thank you. Anybody want to hit on that? Brad?
I have three sons. When the oldest graduated from Willow Creek Composite High School, there was over a hundred graduates. When my second son graduated, there was a hundred and fifty-five. When my third son graduated, there was fifty-five. I was at the graduation ceremonies last year, there were forty graduates. We're just not having the children we used to. We need more children and more population.
Okay. Nobody's...
Lining up and sitting down. This is a question specifically for Sherwood. Sherwood, in your opening remarks, you talked almost exclusively about taxation, that we were overtaxed. Can you expand on that, on how you're going to reduce the taxes if we elect you as a councillor?
Well, first off, no business pays taxes. They're assessed tax, but they include it in the prices of the goods and services that they sell. Everybody is familiar with the overreach and overtaxation from Ottawa. We have the taxation from the government of Alberta and then the municipal taxes as well. Now, any budget, in my mind, should include ten percent being set aside for rainy days. Okay? I've taken a look at the budget, and the thing that I noticed was that we rely heavily on grants for projects, but unfortunately, we tend to open up more grants than we really have enough money to cover without raising property taxes. What I'm suggesting is maybe fewer grants strategically, got for fewer projects so that we can start saving some money and pay off the interests that we are currently indebted for previous loans that we've incurred.
Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Bevill Arby, and I'm a pastor, and I minister to addicts, alcoholics, and criminals. And I just would like to ask our council if you're aware of how many addicts are in this town and how many drug dealers are in this town? It's brutal and it's crucial, and I've laid behind more than one that has passed away on the bed. And so, I'm just concerning maybe an outreach or some form of even just considering looking into that. I appreciate it. Anybody want to stand or respond? Yes?
Yeah, I, I and my wife have worked with addiction and recovery in our church for about four years, and you're right. I did have a good chat with the RCMP, and they explained that they've run most of the rascals out of town, but there are still a few left around. And if we speak up as a community and talk to them, they'll respond to us. And so, you ask a valid question. We need to keep the rattlesnakes and the skunks out of town, and sometimes it just, sometimes we have to step up when it's uncomfortable and talk to people about this.
Yes, I have had many in my home, and they go through, but I just really would like to encourage the council to consider this, even a drop in center for suicides. Now, Mike in our, is very good, sorry, but, so thank you, just consider that.
Anybody else want to do that? You got a question? Okay.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight. I think it's hopeful to see so many candidates up here rooting for Clarestom, and I think it's amazing to see so many people out here excited to see what's going to happen. I think it speaks a lot to our community, but I do believe that it says a lot about a person when they recognize their own areas of weakness. For those who are hoping to return to council, is there one thing that you would consider or change or do differently if you had the opportunity to come back?
All right. Rod?
Oh, where do I begin?
Minus.
As some of you know, I'm a, I'm a technology, you know, technology guy, and, and when I stepped onto council, I thought, oh, I'm gonna be whip the, whip it up and we'll get some high-speed internet and we'll get, tell us moving and Rogers moving and all the things, and wow, that was a bigger mountain than I thought it was. We've had, we've had some small companies come in, one recently Wi-Fi, they're gonna do some wireless shots and maybe help some of our businesses in the southeast and northwest kind of thing to, to improve some things, but I guess that was a pretty big rock and I thought I could move it further, and I hope to move it a little further next time.
Diana?
Well, I've only been on council for two years, but I've started like getting my feet wet, and it's been very interesting being on different programs or different boards, and I just really am excited about the chambers of commerce. I'm just excited about the people that are on the board and the ideals they have, and they want to connect with businesses, they want to see them flourish, they want to see different things happen in our community. So, I'm just excited about being on the chambers of commerce.
You. Anyone else? Okay, we're going again.
We recently moved here from a small town in rural BC that had a doctor shortage, and the town actually hired somebody to do outreach and to hire doctors, and within several years, she has seven doctors into the area. I wanted to know what Clarestom is doing regarding the doctor shortage.
Brad?
Clarestom's had a recruitment committee longer than any other community that I know. We actively talk to new doctors all the time. It is quite difficult right now, but we, we, we've tackled this for many, many years.
Seth?
Yeah, so not exactly doctors, but I actually just went and spoke with our MLA here in town, and she showed me that there is currently a program with RNs, they're linking up with Calgary, and there's a couple other towns in there, but Clarestom is one of them, and they're actually allowing people to live in town and become RNs and go through their entire schooling here, so I thought that was something really cool to utilize.
Sherwood?
There's another resource that people often overlook, and that's your pharmacists are capable of recommending and prescribing a number of different types of medications for different kinds of ailments that don't require you to set an appointment or have an actual doctor, so that's something you might find of use.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, this is open to all. How do you plan to attract new business and industry to town? Anyone? Riley?
I think the biggest part of it all is every time I've ever talked to anybody about bringing business to town, builders to town, or anything, is how difficult it is. It's always the same story. Clarestom is hard to deal with, and I think that we should do more to make it easier to let different businesses and business people come into town, make it easier to work with, maybe cut a little bit of the red tape and kind of streamline some things.
Thank you. Candice?
I don't think that there's much more that we can do to actually bring a business into town. We've created some tax incentive, incentives, we've got some ASPs that have opened up that will have some commercial property available. We have empty buildings that sit empty for years and we can't even fill those, but if a business wants to come to town, the first thing that we say to them is yes, how can we help you? That's the best thing that we can do right now.
Thank you. Charlie?
One of the ways to, to approach this is become members of the industry associations, whether it be one I'm familiar with, the electronics one, or builders associations and things like that, to start building those relationships and promote our, our town as a place to be. Just, you know, history, one of my largest customers was in Nelson, BC, and they manufactured for Ford. So, having a remote city like, or town like Clarestom, we can attract those kinds of businesses and get, bring them out here.
Thank you. Seth?
So, I've been going door-to-door, I'm at about three hundred houses, and we'll see if I end up getting through the whole town, but at this point, I'm, I believe I'm at thirty or forty people that I've talked to. I always used to be pretty naive and think, oh, those buildings are sitting empty because nobody wants to start a business. And I've actually heard twenty to thirty people say, I've been trying to start a business for five years, and obviously privatized, that doesn't really have anything to do with the council, but I would like to figure out a way that how can we incentivize these buildings to rent out and get those things, those, those businesses running?
You. Von?
Yeah, it's, I've talked with several people, in fact, a friend of mine tried to open up an ice cream shop in town here, a mobile one, and he just could not get the yes to it. Yet he went a little bit south here, went to another town, and within thirty minutes he had the yes. Sometimes, in, in trying to make things happen in our town, we kind of stand in the way, and it's time for us to maybe get out of the way, still in bringing laws and rules, but get out of the way and let business flourish.
You. Sherwood?
One of the things that businesses or potential businesses need to understand is our demographics. If we make our demographics more concise and available to them, they'll have a better idea of what sort of services or products we need and what the likelihood of their success is here before they come and invest money. Last thing we want to see is failed businesses because it sets a bad precedence and a bad taste for other people when they think about the possibilities here.
Thank you. Got a question from the floor.
Thank you. My name is Yukari, and I work at the healthcare field almost ten years, and then I'm work at, currently I'm work at Willow Creek Continuing Cancer Center and the General Hospital, and then I help other people in the communities, community-wise, and then, then I'm just, my question is, so the population, we talked about the kids and bringing in, but that people were lots of old people here, and then how, town-wise, how can we help those people who can't even, just only one choice to go to the stores or, you know, don't have vehicles and, and even though that snow shoveling, they can't do it, and then, yeah, how can we help as town? Thank you.
Arnie? The best way to, to help is to be a good neighbor to the people around you, and keep your eyes open, pay attention to what's going on. If somebody needs help, offer the help, don't just stand by and wait for someone else to do it.
Sherwood?
One of the things we need to be aware of is our neighbors, as this gentleman stated. One of the things we need to be aware of is our neighbors, as this gentleman stated. That means you need to get involved with other people's lives, whether you like it or not, we're a community. And we can't do this alone. If you know some older folks that have needs, share that with your friends so that you can work with them as a group. Don't let old folks die alone.
Rod?
I'll just take the opportunity to give a shout out to the Transportation Society in town as well. They, they help a lot of folks get to where they need, uh, those that don't drive. Uh, Mike Cutler was the, uh, liaison with that and, and I always spoke, uh, how, how strong that group was and how dedicated they were.
Thank you.
Town council, town of Clarets Home Council increases electricity franchise fee from two to nine percent. Sixty-one percent of my bill is, uh, the delivery, thirty-nine percent is, uh, my usage. What are you gonna do the next time them big wigs come ask for more money from two percent to nine? What's it gonna be eighteen next? I'd like to know an answer from anyone on this floor.
Candace?
Our franchise fees are a very small portion of that bill. We did raise them, but it helps, um, put our money across everybody. Not everybody pays property taxes. So that's one way to create revenue from people who just rent. It's in the last four years, we've probably raised it about five dollars per month, per bill, per household. It's, it's not affordable for everybody, but it's, uh, it has to be done. And we need money for our infrastructure and everything. There is a deficit and there's never enough money. So that's a small price to pay, I think, for the future of your community.
We compare everything to other communities in Alberta. Like when we discuss this issue, we compare with like twenty-five other communities. We are on the lower end of that graph. So other communities are creating income and leaving us behind because our rates are so much lower.
Rod?
And I'll just expand on, on one thing about it. I mean, we can debate the percentage. But one thing those franchise fees do is they spread that across a broader group of, uh, realizing there's only one taxpayer, but a broader, broader group of people. You know, the, the province doesn't pay property taxes, the hospitals don't pay property taxes, but they do pay that franchise fee. So it just helps spread things a little bit more smooth, um, so that we're not just in everybody's, uh, pocket from a, uh, from a property tax point of view.
Got another question from the floor here.
Yeah, I'm Steve Pitek. I live in Clarets Home here, lived here my whole life. I was born here. And what you guys are doing with the water is terrible. I'm the one that wrote the thing about the water in the paper last week, if you know what I mean. You guys are in total violation of the Water Act. The Water Act states you cannot turn water into a revenue source, period. And that's exactly what you've done, Mr. Schlossberger, and you're proud of it. I asked you to read the Constitution, I asked you to read the Canadian Bill of Rights, I've asked you to read the Alberta Bill of Rights, and I've asked you, what's it? And your answer was, I don't have to.
Okay, we'll leave, leave it?
I'll gladly answer that question, um, because when you are paying a water bill, Steve, and I appreciate that, that you're not going to like this answer and you shake your head at me every time I open my mouth, but that's okay. It costs money to treat the water. It costs money to put the pipes in the ground. It costs money to run the plant. None of that is a guaranteed right. That costs every person in this room money to, to make you have potable water come out of your tap. Uh, we could be in a position where we, where we, uh, blended half of that cost into your general property taxes. Instead, a number of years ago, we went to a full-cost recovery, uh, model to ensure that you knew exactly what that cost in order to deliver the water. Yes, uh, I, I ran a, a restaurant for a number of years. It was a large cost to me, as one of the heavier water users in, in town. But I did understand that in order to provide the service, it costs money. With that, I'm proud of the fact that we're not having to take out debentures and loans to put pipes in the ground because of model of, of delivery that we've given. And what I would say on that is the only other option is a Cistern and a big old, uh, jug in the back of your truck and you can load it up and, uh,
Okay. Time out. Okay, Charlie?
Our homeowners association in B.C., uh, we purchased our water from West Bank First Nations, who pumped it out of, uh, the lake. And it was for our community about two hundred thousand dollars a year just to purchase the water. But we still had to supply the infrastructure to get it from where West Bank First Nations dropped it off with us to, uh, the homes in the community. That was many thousands of dollars for piping, P R V valves, all those things. They all cost money, which the homeowners had to cover the cost of. So, yeah, water is free, but you do have to pay to deliver it.
Okay, got another question here. Have we annexed more property for housing and businesses? Yes or no?
Could you repeat that?
Have we an- annexed more property for housing and businesses?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Guess that's it.
I have a question that is on most of us, as white-haired people are. And I see there's a few up there, but I don't think you realize what the problem is. Whether you go to soup kitchen or go just together and have coffee with, with friends, whether it's at the coffee shops or whatever, you know what the question is? Why aren't we having another grocery store? You guys are, just seem to be playing lollipops with the guy that's here in town. And I think it's a little bit of a, it seems to me it's a little bit of a, of a old boys' club. Cause you won't do it. I'll be right in one second. Fort MacLeod's got two tr- two stores and it's less population here. What are you gonna do about it?
David? David?
Yeah, um, like I said in my opening, when I, we moved here, we saw there was a grocery store and I was blown away. We never shopped there. Uh, I would love to shop there. I know that you spend money in, in your town. It goes into the hands of six different people in that town. So I would love to shop at the I G A. But, and we do for small things. But yeah, we go to Fort MacLeod or we go to Oketoks or we go to Lethbridge. I would love, love, love to look into getting another grocery store in town. Um, if, if only to have some sort of competition, lower the price, something. I mean, the Dollarama came in, you can buy some things there. There's other kind of options, small options. But yeah, I, I, I would love to look into getting another grocery store in town.
Seth?
Yeah, so, um, we can't force private businesses to start here. The best we can do is incentivize and show that Clarets Home is ready to grow and ready to handle two grocery stores. Um, we can't force anybody to come and start a grocery store. The best we can do is, uh, enforce, uh, start policies and give incentives to people to, uh, come to their own conclusions that Clarets Home is ready to have two grocery stores.
Diana?
That's been a hot item. That's always been talked about, but we need investors into our community. Um, and, and it's out there. Uh, it's been spoken for another grocery store, but you have to have someone that wants to invest in the community. And the, and it just hasn't happened. But when it happens, I mean, we'll be welcoming them. We'll be excited just as much as you guys will be excited when we see that happen, when the ground is worked up for that grocery store.
Okay, Charlie?
I guess I follow like David. Uh, we shop in Lethbridge, we shop in Oketoks, we shop in Fort MacLeod. I say to the people here, if somebody else brings grocery products to the community, help support that. That will create competition. Competition creates lower prices. So hopefully that will happen. The other thing we need is, as we keep saying, increase the population here so there's more people shopping.
I've got this question here too, just a sec. Are we doing anything to increase ability to, for another grocery store? Okay, Keith?
Well, I'll answer the second question then.
Okay.
So really good news. We have a developer on the south end of town who has an area structure plan complete, has gone through the subdivision process to have both commercial and residential lands. Uh, just in the process of getting everything ready that he could pull the trigger to put deep infrastructure down. With that, he has also been advertising with, uh, a regional and national, uh, realty agent, uh, on, on commercial lands. They've talked to just about every chain that would put one in and there is interest. There is definite interest in coming to Clarets Home. The one thing that they haven't seen is just that little barometric needle pushed towards growth. And without that growth, you can't get, uh, a private business to invest. Nice thing is, what have we got? A guy that wants to put in housing next year. What have we got? We've got a meat processing plant and a plane that's a stop sign. The growth is coming.
Lon?
Look, people vote with their feet and they'll go somewhere else if we don't provide it. We have to open our doors and make this possible. And we can talk to other businesses. I, I don't know if the town has talked to other businesses about this personally, but it would make it my interest and my goal as mayor to step forward and opt to co-op, to talk to No Frills, to talk to these other places and yes, say hey. Because Clarets Home is thirty-eight hundred people, but the surrounding place is another three thousand people. That's enough to start another store. Thanks.
Got a question here.
Name is Doug Camery. I've lived here my whole life, probably longer than some of you guys have been alive. But anyhow, um, since the grocery store was brought up and you compare to other towns, maybe go talk to Pincher Creek Council and, uh, Cartston. They both have brand-new No Frill stores. Why hasn't Clarets Home, uh, the council itself talked to No Frills? Thank you.
We have talked to every grocery chain there that's out there. No Frills did not build new stores in either Clarets Home or Cartston. They took occupation of buildings that were empty in those communities. I have, I've talked to one developer that says it is a very large, large investment. And you don't just tell somebody that they have to build a new grocery store.
Okay, last question. Okay, make it and then this will be it.
My concern, everybody, is with this community. Just hang on. No, no, you, you, listen, have a seat. No one's getting thing. But okay, this is for the councillor members, okay? This is for the council members. This is about your money. If you're not worried about your money, vote whoever you want in. If you're worried about your money, go with the people that are gonna take care of it. Cause it's all about the money, everybody. Don't lose sight of that. It's about the money. Thank you very much.
Last question.
I would just like you to remember that all of us up here are also taxpayers, so we're very aware of the money that we're spending.
Okay, we're out into a debate here. What are we doing for doctor retention? And as we have ti- he is losing all, losing it all. What are we doing for doctor retention as we have doctors retiring? Anyone wanna touch that? Brad?
Yes, we have a doctor retiring. There's many doctors retiring. We have had a recruitment committee for more years than most communities in southern Alberta. We are actively looking for new doctors. We, we need to make them welcome to Clarets Home. We've had other doctors that came here that weren't welcomed.
Riley?
I think the big thing is, would be incentivizing, having more incentives for them to stay. And like I was born here, raised here, lived here my whole life. I've never gone anywhere else. The same doctor that delivered me, delivered my niece. Um, it's, I think the big thing is the whole community aspect of it. And we really need to focus more on making things better for them so they wanna stay. Make it that they wanna be here.
Lon?
We have an immigration office here. Certainly something can happen from that because there's a whole world out there and there's really neat people out there. I'm certain would be glad to move to Canada and become a doctor. I, well, maybe they're, they won't come here for the weather, but they will come here for the opportunity.
Holy doodle.
I just wanna comment that I'm seeing some
Just a minute, Seth's ahead of you there.
Um, yeah, I, I think if, if we're going to try to retain doctors, that we need our best ability to show them that we are a competitive community and that they don't have, uh, choices elsewhere. We need to have air schools, we need to have more recreation. We ha- need to have more things to do in Clarets Home. That's how you're going to retain doctors and show them that Clarets Home is the best place for them to, uh, grow.
Charlie?
I was just gonna say that I've seen some interesting things, uh, done off Vancouver Island uh, by private citizen groups, uh, soliciting doctors from other countries. Maybe it's something we can look at.
So we're into the closing statements now. And I'll be here all night if this keeps, anyhow, Sherwood, you're first.
Well, my views are not always popular, but someone needs to acknowledge the elephants in the room. Politicians are notorious for making promises they don't or can't keep. Clarets Home's financial boat is taking on water. We either fix the leaks and float or keep doing business as usual and drown. This election will reveal what our people value more, popularity or reason. The question is, how long can you tread water? Thank you.
Uh, okay, Keith Carlson. Okay, Keith Carlson?
Nope, you're good. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I appreciate all of the opinions. I know that there are many hills to climb. Some of them look like mountains from where we stand. But I am proud of some of the ones that we've actually left in our rearview mirror over the last eight years. There are... Oh, sorry. Is that it better? All right. So, yeah, anyways, I'm proud of what we've done in the last number of years. I know there's some big mountains to climb still. But I do believe we're going in the right direction. I also know sitting on economic development that there are so many things that make it to the 90th percentile. We're like at the five-yard line. And whatever the challenge is with private investment, whether it's their financing, whether it's land locations, we don't quite get there. There's so many things that we've missed by this much, and I'm sure Jordy can attest to that as well. But all we can do is keep moving in the right direction, and that's where I want to go.
Okay, thank you. Rod?
Thanks, everyone, for coming out. I think this is our job interview for our next four years for everyone up here, and I hope you've heard enough to make some good, sound decisions. All of these folks have something that they want to contribute. I hope I've contributed enough over the last four years that you'll consider letting me serve another four years. We've laid a lot of groundwork. I think we're on the precipice for some good things, and I realize I'm standing between you and a Blue Jays game, so...
Is that hockey? Arnie? I think I hit her. Yeah, sorry.
No problem. As someone who's retired, I have the time, energy, and the experience to give this role my full attention. I'd be honored to earn your support. Thank you.
Diana?
Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm committed to serving this community with integrity, transparency, and a deep respect for the voices of all residents. This campaign is rooted in collaboration, in listening to your concerns, and working together to find real, lasting solutions. I ask you for your support as we work together a stronger, more inclusive future for our community. Thank you, and I'd look forward to continuing this important conversation with each one of you.
Thank you. David Knox?
Yeah, I want to be a part of the future of this community. I work in town here at the post office. My wife works at the library. All five of my kids work. We're not going anywhere, and we love volunteering and helping out, but I'd like to do it more in an official capacity. I have the time, the energy, and the passion to do this. I think Claris Home is a great place to live, and I don't want to get complacent. I think we should be working towards a great future. Thank you.
Charlie?
Living here for four years and meeting the number of people I have over the last four years, I actually see a very bright future for Claris Home. I would be honored to be part of that setting, that direction for that future. I thank you all for coming tonight, and I hope I can count on your support.
Seth?
Leadership isn't about noise. It's about consistency, clarity, and results. I'm asking for your vote because I will bring these three things to the council table: discipline, transparency, and follow-through. Discipline means we stick to priorities and we measure the results. Transparency means you get the numbers and the reasoning before the vote, not after. And follow-through means projects don't drift, they finish. I'll keep listening first, deciding with evidence, and owning the outcome every time. If that's the kind of counsel you want, I'd be honored to earn your support. I'm Seth Wagner, Strength in Community. I'm ready to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Riley?
Once again, I'll be reading a prepared speech because I am absolutely horrible at public speaking. Thank you all for being here tonight. It shows how much we all care about the future of our community. I'm running for town council because I believe in listening, accountability, financial responsibility, and growth. Listening means hearing your ideas and concerns year-round. Accountability means being open and honest about the decisions we make. Financial responsibility means making smart choices with our tax dollars and investing it wisely in what matters most. And growth means supporting our residents and local businesses while planning for a strong future. We may not always agree on every issue, but I promise to lead with common sense, transparency, and a focus on what's best for all of us. Together, we can build a stronger, more vibrant community, one we can all be proud to call home. I'd be honored to earn your trust and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And Candace?
I haven't made a joke all night, so I'll just say you saved the best for last. But anyhow, this is the second longest job interview that I've ever had, and four years ago, you threw your support behind me. I hope I've lived up to your expectations. I now have some experience and more knowledge on municipal governance. I want to continue growing in and with this community that my family has chosen to put roots down in. I will make the same promise that I did last time, and that's to be the best that I can be. On October 20th, I would be honored if you would put your mark beside my name and throw your support behind me once again. Thank you for your consideration, and good luck to all the candidates.
And here's the joke on you. This is the other half of Craig Zimmer's thing that I didn't get read last time. Why should you vote for Craig Zimmer? I understand how hard people work and have to have worked for their money. I want to be part of the team that makes sure your hard-earned, your hard-earned money gets spent the best possible way. I don't want to take $1 of your tax money and spend it as $1. I would like to take a hard-earned dollar and try to turn it into two or five. Your hard-earned dollars are what we help our community grow and flourish, so it isn't something taken for granted. Without you there, there is no, there is no us. I want Claris Home to remain on the map and not just a section of the Alberta history book. If I am elected again, I will continue to promise always to have my ears on you and be your voice on council. You can continue to approach me anytime, yes, even in IGA and post office. I promise to continue working with administration on all matters, on council, yearly budgets, the three-to-five-year plans, and make sure your tax dollars are being spent wisely so we can continue to grow and be relevant so that we have an amazing place to call home. A vote for Craig Zimmer is a vote knowing I have your best interest in our community. I almost lost my voice, but we still have the mayors to do. If he can outdo what I did... Do you guys mind if Craig? He's not gonna reread this, I hope. Where is he? Is he hiding? Wait, make your way up here. I'm gonna put the mayors in here first. Okay? Okay. If you guys agree with this, okay? Okay, okay, so mayors. Brad, your closing statement.
My top priority if I'm elected again is to create housing in this community. As a council and administration, we have met with landowners, developers, house builders, and we are showcasing Claris Home as a place that's going to grow. My name is Brad Schlossberger. I'm running for mayor. I do hope I can count on your vote. Good luck to all the candidates running for council, and thank you for putting your name forward. It's a big commitment. Thank you for all attending.
Okay, Lon, you're next.
I prefer clarity over agreement, and when some of the constituents in this called me back with my little card that I gave him out, we found that we had different ideas, but we could agree on certain things once we were clear. Look, I'm running for mayor because I want to try and bring more prosperity and more opportunity to this community. I have some ideas. Some people think it's a little bit far to reach, but I'm reaching for those big things. And I hope that I can get your vote and your confidence. I'll come around and knock on your door. Please, talk to me and ask me questions. And if I can't give you the answers right away, I will give you the answers. I'm Lon Hall, and my phone number is 587-586-6625. Give me a call, or just ask for a card and make me responsible, and I will represent you. I promise you that. Thank you for your time, and let me know what I can do to help you. Thanks.
Okay. Here you go, Craig. And they cut you off really quick.
That's fine. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. Thank everybody who voted me in last time. I look forward to doing, hopefully be able to do it again a second time. I'll keep it short and sweet. Come October 20th, put an X by Zimmer, not by the history books. Thanks.
Anyhow, we want to thank everybody for coming. Thank you all for showing up.
Don't forget, the early vote is tomorrow, you guys. Go ahead and vote.
Okay. Okay, thank you to all the candidates and everything for showing up, and it was a pleasure doing it. Thank you. Time out.
Before everyone runs away, 10 chairs per stack, please. If you would make stacks and just put them anywhere on the floor, we'll come pick them up.
And thank you to the local press and to the Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring this.